Mayor Breeden.
Here.
Mr. Blades?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Mauer?
Here.
Five present, we have a quorum.
A motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. This is a time for a public comment?
Five eyes, motion carries.
Thank you, I'm sorry. This is a time for a public comment on closed session. Is there, is that a call? Okay. Caller? Caller, please identify yourself and make your comment on closed session.
Yes, my name is Mike Neal, and I'm calling to comment on the closed session item about negotiations with the Navy for a land lease concerning the water plant. The disc keeps coming back like a bag cold over and over and over. This has been pointed out to be highly disadvantageous to citizens of Ridgecrest, by myself and some others numerous times. The water that the Navy's been allowed to use in the past for its use from the wastewater plant is like 750 acre feet plus. That's $3 million worth of water at least, and that's the cheapest possible water you could find to use somewhere that we are going to be forced to report by the groundwater agency, and that's the water district people, and that's most of the people in the city of Ridgecrest. I have myself actually been told by Mr. Mauer at infrastructure meeting about 90-plus days ago that they would put this on the agenda to consider giving some direction to seriously consider having the city put the wastewater plant on city property, and of course, it never made it on there. It seems that Mr. Strand is bent and fully intends to push the city to get a lease with the Navy and put it out on Navy property and cost us that $3 million plus to make it harder for us to use any recycled water that we might generate off of the plant. And I keep saying, and I'm going to say over and over again, until we finally maybe get it done, we need to put an end to these negotiations. We need to, City Council needs to direct the City Manager to get busy coming up with plans to put wastewater plant on city property and be done with this fallacious approach of trying to continue with what we always did in the past and disadvantage heavily the people of Ridgecrest. So I'm asking the council members tonight to direct the City Manager as such what I've stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, is there any other public comment on closed session? I see none. Okay, then we will go into closed session. Thank you.
Hey, Gary.
Okay, I am going to call regular session to order, and Lloyd, you're on with us? Can somebody verify that Lloyd is on with us? Well, I think we can start the pledge at least without Lloyd, so would you let us? Are we live? Okay, we are now. And Lloyd, are you on? Okay, well, let's start. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and let's stand for the pledge, please, and remain standing for the implication.
Place flag.
Your entry.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Lord, be with us here tonight as we make some decisions and try to reconcile changes and differences and bring them all closer together so we can find resolution. And, Lord, we've lost people in our community, and we don't want to recognize ones specifically over others we've lost, but there are so many in this community who have passed away, and their influence and their work will never be filled as good and as appropriate as they were to all of us. So, Lord, you know who they are, you know where their losses are, and we thank you. And please be with us all as we try to be one. It is your name we pray. Amen. Okay, Lloyd, are you on now?
I am. Can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
We can. Please give your attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lloyd Hilton, City Attorney. City Council met in closed session on two items identified on the agenda. Sorry for the delay, I'm hearing my own words echoing back. Direction was given, no final action was taken. That concludes my report. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item is going to be public comment, I'm, uh, public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council matters that are not, that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of this agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Is there anyone in the council who would like to make a public comment? In the council building? Is there anyone online who would like to make a public comment? I see no calls, I see no lights blinking. I'm going to go one, two, three, four, five. No more public comment, we will close that up. Council announcements. I would like to read an announcement from East Kern County Resource Conservation District. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Kern by resolutions presented to the Board of Directors shall appoint four directors to the governing board of the East Kern County Resource Conservation District as an alternative to the election to directors. So if anybody in the public or anybody in this room would like to do that, it is for four years commencing November of 2020. In order to be considered for the appointment, any applicant must be an owner of land or a designated agent of a landowner in the district which resides in this district and shall be, and shall be a registered voter. There's information here on how you file, and we will have it up here if anybody's interested. And so that's for the East Kern Resource Conservation District, four openings. Is there any other council announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two. Number one, I just got a notification from Caltrans concerning the Rosemont Mahavi Rehab Project set to begin this month. It says there will be, there'll be shoulder work on northbound State Route 14 starting in mid-October with one lane open northbound and no effect on the southbound traffic. Mid-November, we will close the southbound side and move all traffic to the newly updated northbound lanes with one lane in each direction and a K-rail concrete barrier down the middle. There will be emergency gates throughout the K-rail and allow emergency vehicles to enter and exit through that area. Just so you know, if you're starting probably right about now, if you're heading south to Lancaster-Palmdale area, there will be lanes closed going down through there, so it might be a little bit of a traffic jam. The second announcement I'd like to make is I am having my knee replaced, my left knee replaced on the 20th of October. I'm going to try to call in on the 21st if I'm doing okay. I should be out of the hospital by then and be back home to do the call-in, so just make that announcement.
Thank you. Any other council announcements?
Um, I'll do a quick one now because people are here. The Parks Committee, we have been working on a grant application for a pool, and so one of the most important categories is public participation, and so we are looking at having a meeting scheduled October 20th, and it will be outdoors at the Kermit G. Ball Field, and then we're looking at one for November 2nd, because originally, we normally meet on the first Tuesday, but that falls on Election Day, so we'll likely be moving it to Monday night instead. So please follow on Facebook the Parks and Recreation Department and look for those notices, so, or in the newspaper. Do you have anything else?
Um, we have to have, what, five meetings prior to mid-December?
Yes, and those are?
So that's why you're going to be seeing a lot more meetings with the Parks and Recreation between now and December, so just, we'll try to get it out into the public through the media and the papers and through the council, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. So I ask then that you can join me at the podium, because we have some pretty special people we're going to recognize. Actually, I didn't mean all of you join me at the podium. They will join me, and you are going to be called up, please.
Okay, the first one we have tonight is recognition of service. The certificate is awarded to Ryan Maroney for recognition of 20 years' service to the city of Ridgecrest. I understand he's not here, so Chief, I'll give that to you to give to him.
And I'd like to present this recognition of service to Officer Elizabeth Franco. Thank you for all you've done for Ridgecrest, especially over the last 20 years and for our community.
So normally, we do these at our awards, annual awards ceremony, but with COVID, we were unable to do it this year, so we'll be doing a lot more of these at councils, so. Thank you, Lisa, for 20 years of hard work and 20 more, so. Nobody wants to see my face.
Can we all stand up there behind you when you get a picture of that too? Because we all want to thank you. Please come on up. All of us, right there. Okay, we're going to do it behind you.
No, I'm just getting out of the way.
And you didn't see Justin DePierre up here because he was awarded previously, but we just wanted to announce his. Yeah, we still have this for him.
Yeah, Justin previously received his, but we wanted to make sure he had to show up tonight and receive this also, so. No good deed goes unpunished. Thank you, Justin, for 20 years of dedication to the city and all the citizens. Thanks.
Can we get one with you?
Absolutely.
I have to say how wonderful it is to see people in here. Thank you, we appreciate you coming in, we appreciate you maintaining the six-foot distance and wearing your masks, so thank you. Okay, the next item is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff consent items are to be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comments or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered in listed sequence with the opportunity for any member of the public to address the City Council concerning an item that any action is taken. Number two, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council's successor agency redevelopment agency financing authority, housing authority, regular meeting dated September 16th, 2020. And number three, authorization City Manager Ron Strand to sign the notice of completion for the east side of the South Downstreet RSTP project, for the city clerk to sign the notice of completion and for city staff to release retention in the amount of $33,745.43 to the contractor Griffin Company within 30 days after the recordation of this notice of completion. Is there any council member like any item pulled? Is there any public who would like any item pulled? Pardon me? Number three. Okay, a motion to approve item two, please.
There is a calling.
I'm sorry, is there anyone who would like to make a comment on the phone call? I didn't see any lights out there. Okay, so a motion? Now we do, okay. Any item that you wish to have pulled? Please identify yourself.
Yeah, hey, this is Dave Matthews. I was waiting for public comment on items not on the agenda, and they didn't get me on.
We did have that.
I know, I was waiting already.
All right, Dave, did you not respond? Because I asked, is there anybody who wanted to respond? So if you want to do that, go ahead and do it now, please.
Thank you very much. Yeah, shucks, gee whiz, I didn't even notice this note, this meeting was open again until just a couple of hours ago. And also, shucks, we had the ribbon cutting for the South Downs last week. I was all ready to go. I looked at the temperature, it was 100 degrees, I was ready to go, and then I started checking how I was feeling, and I didn't make it, so.
Oh, we're sorry.
Anyway, sorry for that, but at least it's completed. I wanted really to get there to put my hands on the, on the big scissors or whatever, but maybe some other time. And I just wanted to point out that I had the occasion to dine out at a couple of places in Ridgecrest here over the weekend. They were, one was Friday evening, and it was fairly comfortable. Another was Monday morning, and it was more comfortable because it was in the shade, hadn't got hot yet. But I don't know how many people noticed that, or followed the weather, but the Gulf Coast and the, and the east coast get some things they call hurricanes, and they have what they call a wind event with them. And the local weatherman is predicting a wind event, so I think you need to get some urgency in that memo you're going to send to the, to the governor, because we're going to have canvases and, and things blowing all over the city here. They can't, they can't operate that way. So get some urgency in that memo. And that's all I ask for now, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so a motion then to, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Five eyes, motion carries.
Okay, item number three. Is it, did you ask for that one? Okay, would you want to come up and ask your question, sir?
It's not a question, but simply on behalf of the Ridgecrest Elementary Academy, I wanted to, as chairman, present my thanks and appreciation to the council for getting downs completed. You have made a major improvement in the child safety for that school, and I realize it's taken many, many years to get to that point, but thank you very much for getting there.
Thank you, thank you, that's nice to hear. Okay, so there is no more discussion on that item?
I move approval.
Second. Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
Okay. The next item is an item that I asked for to be put on the agenda. It is a discussion and approval letter to the Kern County Board of Supervisors, a resolution to the governor, and we are sending it to the governor. We are following, sorry, we are following the example of Kern County asking the governor to give us better reasons why we can't go on, to explain why we have to remain closed, and why the, the goalposts keep getting changed. And we are asked, we are supporting the Kern County's resolution. I would like to state that the letter has been in the works for a long time because we went to the governor, Kern County, asking him to separate East Kern from West Kern, and in the course of that discussion with Van Constantine and with the approval of Supervisor Scrivener and Supervisor Gleason, it came back that not only no, but heck no, because they weren't able to try to administer every city who wants to be considered separate from Kern County. So we, what we're saying is, and so because of all over the state, if one is approved, they all would have to be, and we'd never get anything done. And I did read today in the, in the Bakersfield Californian that we may be able to go into the red zone by Friday, so we'll wait to see that announcement. But I want this done, I want us to follow up and support our Board of Supervisors with their letter and our deep concern. We've all said it, we, we bitched and moaned, and, and it doesn't do any good, but we have to be on the record of saying, take care of our businesses, support our community, and continue to say this is not the way things should be done. So that reason I asked this item to be on the agenda, to show our support of Kern County and the governor, to the governor and say, we don't support your decision, we want this open. So is there any discussion from council?
I just want to say I'm very excited to see this finally come forward and that I'm excited, hopefully he pays attention, because once again, just last week, he added a new condition, so hopefully we can finally get our businesses open and our people back to work.
I certainly hope so. Is there any discussion from the public? Please come forward.
Before Scott speaks, I just want to put in my two cents, Scott. I had the opportunity in the last couple of weeks of traveling through several states, and it's amazing the difference that each state is doing, but Governor Newsom, I saw on the news the other day that he now wants us to wear our masks when we're out dining and take, put them on between bites, which is, the CDC doesn't recommend you keep touching your mask back and forth.
And don't touch your face, remember that.
Don't touch your face, don't touch your face. Then I heard, and I don't know how true this is, I heard that he now came out that even my wife and I, when we're home alone, we should be wearing our masks to protect each other. I think that's getting a little bit, I don't want to say in the bedroom, but in the house, so anyway, I think, I think this is a great letter. Thank you.
Good. Okay, Scott? If that's who you are.
Good evening, council, good to see everybody here this evening. I may have missed it, do we have, can we hear what the letter says other than what was just told to us? And is this a done deal letter? Could we add anything to it, or yes, all the above?
Do you, do you, Rika, would you read the letter?
Dear Governor Newsom, the Ridgecrest City Council would like to extend our complete support and backing of Kern, of the Kern County Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-269. The City of Ridgecrest fully recognizes the difficulty and work associated with navigating the state of California through the COVID-19 pandemic. We simply ask for clarity, consistency, and continuity from our administration during implementation of its COVID-19 policy directives.
From your, from your administration? You said our.
I'm sorry, it says your.
Okay.
Thank you. We support the County of Kern's request that your administration work more closely with all the counties in developing a pathway for increased business activity and school reopenings in a manner that does not continue to move the goalposts on counties and arbitrarily expand the criteria and metrics the state is using to determine when businesses and schools can begin to reopen. These change in guidelines make it impossible for businesses to plan to reopen. The attached Kern County Board of Supervisors Resolution is unanimously supported and endorsed by the Ridgecrest City Council. We demand that counties be judged on simple, consistent, achievable, and measurable objectives related to slowing the spread of the COVID-19.
Get a gold star for that. Let's all ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from people inside the council? Is there any public comment from people who are listening, are calling you?
Yes.
Is there any, okay. Please identify yourselves and state your comments or questions.
Yes, this is Dave Matthews again. I was listening to Rika read the letter, and she said it opened with, "Dear Governor Newsom." What I read online said, "Dear Honorable Newsom," and my suggestion was to take out the honorable, but I'm not sure whether it's there or not. They're using, they're looking at the wrong numbers. I've mentioned this before, they need to be looking at the number of deaths per population. I don't know why they get away with all of this stuff. The, the Kern County should have never been closed in the first place. The death rate was very minimal compared to the population of the whole county, and it still is, although it is increasing, I have to admit. And the, the cure rate is getting a heck of a lot better than it was a couple of months ago. So I applaud the city for, for following up on this, but the urgency needs to be impressed, and maybe Mayor, you as the mayor yourself, could just call the governor's office and express your urgency to them.
Matter of fact, I did, sir. I told him a letter was coming. I have his cell phone number from when he was here for the earthquake, and I did call him. I did not speak to him directly, but I did tell him something was coming.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from people online? Please state your comments or questions and identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Mike Neal, and I have something to bring to your attention. This is a document that has been put out and signed by almost 7,000 medical practitioners across the world, by almost 4,000 medical or public health scientists, and heading, and this is called the Great Barrington Declaration. And heading, and this is called the Great Barrington Declaration. And it basically focuses on the deleterious effects of continued extreme lockdowns. And this is happening, of course, all over the world. And we're doing our version of it here in Kern County. The heading on the site, which is Great Barrington Declaration, you can find it easily, says, "As infectious disease epidemiologists and public health scientists, we have grave concerns about the damaging physical and mental health impacts of prevailing COVID-19 policy, and they recommend an approach we call focused protection." And there's, the letter is all on there on that site. Basically what they're saying is you need to only lock down people who are at high risk and let everybody else develop herd immunity. And of course, they give a lot more detail on this. Now, I think it would be a really good idea for this declaration to be forwarded on to Kern County health officials and possibly reference that in the letter being sent out to the state. You know, we have not just the businesses are being affected by lockdowns, but people's health is being affected by the lockdown in a large-scale manner, and it needs to stop. And the silliness that we're going through in California is just that. It's a bunch of overreactive silliness. It's harming all kinds of people in all kinds of ways, including their mental health and their family lives and, and, and community lives and so forth as well. And I sent this earlier, I believe, this morning to Ms. Stevens on a city email. And maybe I'll send that to the rest of you later on. But this is the kind of thing that needs to be brought out, not just, you know, complaining and saying we want our businesses to be open, but, but we need to stop harming our health with these lockdowns.
That was included in the resolution from Kern County, Mike.
Okay, that's, that's, that's good. I didn't miss that part.
Not specifically as you said it, but it was alluded to in that same manner.
Okay. Well, I think this declaration with all this thousands and thousands of medical professionals carries a significant amount of weight to it, and you guys, I think, should, should take a look at that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any other comments? Please identify yourself and state your question and comment.
Hi, this is Mallory Boyd calling. Just wanted to make a comment that I totally support the letter that you're getting ready to send to the governor. Words are important. Towards the end in our closing or the proposed closing, we use the word "demand." I suggest that we consider a different word that's perhaps just as strong, but doesn't sound like we're in a position to demand anything from the governor. Perhaps strongly urge as opposed to demand, like, or something like that might be, might be a better way to wrap up the letter and, and still have the same emphasis that it's important to us, but not, you know, polarize the discussion. Just, just a thought.
I understand what you're saying, sir, but we wanted to make it as strong as we could. We are not indicating that we are not going to abide by the laws and his rulings because we know we have to or potentially lose all the money that's been given to us, been given. Money that has, the contracts and things like that that we've gotten as well as awards from, from the protection we need to take care of the COVID people in the community and to also support our city administration and our staff. And I don't want to, I'm, I'm not interested in changing it. He's not, I want him to say, who do they think they are demanding it? And let him think about it. But I understand respectfully, we probably could say, we strongly urge. What is the council's discussion?
I'm good with "demand."
I'm good with the man, the word demanded.
I think strongly urge is a little better, but it, the county uses it in the tail end of their letter to the, to the, to the governor. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, last, you know, paragraphs on it. The Kern County demands, Kern County demands, Kern County demands, Kern County demands, Kern County demands. So I think it's pretty clear. We can follow along with it.
Okay. Thank you, Mallory. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions from people online or comments? Derry, are you waiving that there aren't?
He said no.
Okay, you're okay.
I motion approval.
Second.
It's actually just direction to authorize me to send it. And if y'all are in agreement, I'll just send it off because there's not a resolution or a motion for it.
Please do.
Will do.
Okay, the next item is a request for authorization to record final track map number 7188, Unit C. Who has got that?
Mr. Culp.
Lauren.
Honorable Mayor, City Council members, this is a procedural item I have for you tonight for the recordation of a final map. What we have for you tonight is the last phase, Unit C, of 7188, Track Map 7188. This is the final 14 lots out of a 40-lot subdivision. The developer has satisfied all the conditions of approval. He's filed a final map. I found that the final map is in substantial compliance to the tentative map. The developer has entered into an improvement agreement in which there is a one-year warranty on the improvements for the subdivision. As a part of this procedural item, we're asking the council to take the following actions. Please authorize the city manager to sign the improvement agreement. And number two, accept the street improvements and offers dedication. Number three, authorize the city engineer, city clerk, and planning commission secretary to sign the final track map. And finally, number four, direct the city clerk to record final track map 7188, Unit C, with the county recorder's office.
Is there any questions of council to Mr. Culp?
I, I had one because we had seen some correspondence back and forth. Did the warranty issues with the Tamarisk issues get worked out? Or is that separate from this one?
It, it is separate. We have a contract with a contractor that's doing the Tamarisk improvements. And it's a separate issue that the developer has satisfied the requirements for his portion of improvements along Tamarisk. So he's satisfied the requirements, the conditions of approval, a improvement plan, and has, has completed his improvements for his portion of Tamarisk. Our contractor is, is doing the work on the city's behalf.
Okay, thank you.
So are any other questions? Any questions from, from public on, in the council chambers? Or any questions for people online? None, okay.
Motion approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item, this is a fun one. Sorry, didn't mean to express an opinion here, but it is. Authorization to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending community development block grant CARES Act funding used in the amount of $73,493 in project description to the Kern County Board of Supervisors for the City of Ridgecrest. And Melissa and Rika, I know you two have been working on this, so would you share with us?
Of course. Honorable Mayor, members of council, Ms. Charlon and I have been working together with the county, and we wanted to help our local restaurants. I've got a presentation here for you. So we are looking at starting a grant program. We had run this presentation and this concept through Economic Development Committee, and they had suggested we bring it to council. So we are looking to target local restaurants. The project overview is for COVID relief efforts. We are looking at targeting Ridgecrest local restaurants through the fact that they are one of the hardest-hit industries as COVID has started. We're looking at outdoor dining services, and our program is looking to purchase actual equipment so that our, our local restaurants can convert properly in terms of anything weather-related. We are looking at specifically swamp coolers, heaters, canopies, things of that nature, barriers. So we're, again, we're looking at targeting restaurant owners, and they are the ones that will be able to apply or their managers. We're looking at specific equipment, heaters, again, tables and chairs, things that will be needed outdoor. And the local restaurant themselves are able to discern exactly what kind of equipment they'll need so they aren't necessarily getting a full package where it's just one heater and one swamp cooler. The application will allow them to specifically pick what is needed. Some of our local restaurants have already set up outside, but they are not excluded from this grant. They are very much welcome to apply. And this applies to our local restaurants within city limits, and this will be verified through city business licenses. And so they will submit a grant application to the city. And once approved, this whole concept, once it's approved here, we will be bringing it to the Board of Supervisors to approve the whole program. Are there any questions?
I have two, if I may.
Of course.
Many restaurant, many restaurants have already purchased some of these, this particular equipment to work outside. Can they use that purchase money for part of the grant? Or must, must it be new purchases?
Unfortunately, we have to get approval through the county first, and so they cannot retroactively bring receipts to the city for, through this program. But they are, again, free to apply still, even if they have outdoor equipment. Some of them I know are renting their equipment now, and they're able to solely apply for this program and, and not necessarily have to pay anything out of pocket for it, so.
And those that already have equipment but only purchased air conditioning can now purchase heating equipment and things like that?
Again, we don't know how long COVID-19 will last and the restrictions will last. So if people are, you know, as the weather turns, we're looking at targeting heaters, and there might be a lot of heaters. There quite possibly could be a second round as well of more funding. And so if, again, restrictions last longer than anticipated, again, we'll allow for more swamp coolers and things of that nature.
Okay, the second question I have, can we make sure the purchases are done locally?
We are looking at going through local retailers, yes.
Yay, thank you. So we benefit the restaurants and our other businesses. Okay. If we can keep it to small businesses, it would be awfully nice.
That we are comparing.
I know you can't do that. It goes by, I'm sure they're going to bid on it.
Yes, we are comparing within the local stores here.
Is there other questions from council?
I just want to say, good job. Thank you for bringing this. And they brought it forward to the Economic Development Committee, and so, and we thought it was good, despite wanting to see us be able to resume normal operations. So, yeah.
So I wanted to ask, I guess more of a reiteration. We've discussed a few times in the economic committee. Now that we are sending this back up to the supervisors, right? This is the next step?
That's correct.
Okay, so are there restaurants, maybe they were not aware, which I'm sure you've done a good job of publicizing this, but could they still come, come back and ask you guys for this, for an allocation or for equipment?
Yes, we have not submitted any or released any formal applications just yet. So until we get approval from the Board of Supervisors, we are not purchasing equipment just yet. We will be getting any applications through the allocation that we have, which is $73,000 about. And after we get those applications, then we'll purchase in bulk.
Thank you.
So I have two comments to add. One of those is I need to state on record that this is a public hearing for ideas for this money. This is just a recommendation from staff. If the public has different ideas on how to use this money, or you as a council have different ideas, this is a public hearing to hear all those options. This is not a set-in-stone program. This is just what Melissa and I have developed and are bringing to you. So we need to entertain other ideas if anybody has some.
So if someone wanted to put up fencing?
I'm not talking about different items within this project. I'm talking about if somebody in the public has a completely different idea how they would like to see this money spent to help alleviate the COVID in Ridgecrest, just to entertain that type of an idea.
Okay.
If you want to add fencing to this, we can certainly try to.
I mean, that's going to be pretty expensive as opposed to a heater or, or whatever.
We are including two types of barriers for allowing, let me go back to.
Yeah, go back to that picture.
We're allowing barriers so that local restaurants are allowed to serve alcohol.
And we're also considering the pole kind, where you just have a podium and you pull a rope across. So that's another option besides that one. But we have to look into pricing and see what's the best option also.
Is there an expiration on the money?
Mid to late next year. We have not been given the exact date from the county yet, but I made sure it was not December 31st of this year. And he told me it was mid to late next year.
Okay, is there any other comments from council?
If I could, if I could interject.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
May I interject, Madam Mayor?
Please.
Thank you. Just to, just to clarify what I, I think I heard Rika explaining is that the action before you, the resolution, is about applying for the grant. If there are ideas that staff or the public have for how to use that money, that would merely be direction to staff. That would not be part of the resolution. Did I get that right, Rika?
Yes, sir. We can change the resolution to state whatever they would like the project to be.
So if, if we adopt this tonight, then if somebody comes up with different ideas and.
This is the public hearing. This is where, whatever you decide tonight, we will take to the Board of Supervisors. This is the hearing for any options that people may have to spend the money.
Can we, we can't then add at another time?
What do you mean by add?
If somebody comes up with a tremendous idea and we haven't, okay, so it has to be tonight?
As Melissa stated, there is potentially a second round. So if people have ideas, they can certainly email us, and we can use that for the second round.
Great, okay. Is there any comments or questions from in the chamber?
There's calls too.
I know I'm going to get the chamber ones first.
Hi again, council. Scott Miller, sitting in the Ridgecrest. Is this only for brick-and-mortar restaurants?
Yes, we are currently targeting restaurants that do not have drive-through access and those who primarily have their, their services indoors.
I'm going to, so, go ahead.
That is, I don't think you answered his question.
She did. She did, but there's a follow-up to it.
It's also businesses within Ridgecrest city limits, and unfortunately catering businesses can go outside city limits. So that's why we have to limit it to brick-and-mortar restaurants for the county.
That's why I was thinking drive-throughs, I mean, drive trucks, you know.
Yeah, they wouldn't be.
The, and I appreciate what you just said, Rika, because I'm talking, I'm a, I own a catering company. And right now, COVID-19 has shut down all of our catering companies in town, not just mine, but other ones also. And we are, like we set up at the farmer's market, but we're currently not allowed to set up because of what level we're at with COVID-19. And they're saying late 2021, early 2022 is what I keep hearing. And for a lot of the small catering companies in town, that's going to be detrimental. That's why I was wondering if it's just for a brick-and-mortar, because what I was thinking is having the plastic, the, they call it.
Plexiglass.
Plexiglass, thank you. Having plexiglass in front of our, in front of our windows, things like that. That does make sense because caterers are able to go out of town. But if we said we wouldn't go out of town for a certain amount of time.
Check that out at the county and then.
So can I translate his, like, your conversation, just talk about an idea? Because food trucks are allowed to operate because the concern for you all is that you aren't in a enclosed space. space. So is there a way that we could ask them about, through the county, not necessarily through our city, since it's mobile, that they could try to apply for funds for vehicles so that then they could operate?
That would be really costly. I love that idea, but vehicles for catering.
Right, I know. I'm just saying, but it's something that you, maybe you could take to the supervisors and ask them, because they got a healthy amount of funding through CARES.
They do. The county did get some, some funds. I don't know their requirements, but theirs are eligible for all of Kern County, not just within city limits.
Okay.
So you'd have to check with them on their specific requirements, but they do have CARES money as well.
Okay, very well. Perfect, thank you.
Is there any other comments from the council here in the building? All right, public, please identify yourself and ask your question or comment. Public, are you there?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is Richard Wagner, 408 South Lincoln. Can you hear me all right tonight?
We can, thank you.
Okay, good. It's unfortunate that there's no retroactive funding, because there are several restaurants and other businesses that have folded, and it'd be nice if they could recoup some of their losses. But I'd really like to see, rather than just restaurants, kids recreational activities, salons and gyms be included, because I know some kids recreational activities are trying to do outside activities rather than indoors. I know salons were forced to go outside or just stay closed for a much longer period than restaurants. So I, I think they have lost much more than some of these restaurants that have been able to reopen. So I'd just like to see other things included besides just restaurants.
Was that addressed at all, both Rick or Melissa?
Yeah, I think that we have a limited amount of money. It can only go so far. The thinner you spread it, the less of an impact it'll have on whatever industry that we choose to help. So we elected to choose the restaurants, one, because they have been excluded to indoor dining, even though there's a possibility they may be able to do 25% indoor dining by October 13th. They are still gonna have to have outdoor dining to survive. The weather's coming, wind, cold. If we dilute this money, then basically it becomes ineffective. I mean, it's a great idea to help these other industries, but, you know, we have suggested this industry because it is, it is, there is enough money that we can probably make an impact, and that's what we want.
Okay. Did that answer your question, sir?
Well, it, it just reaffirms of what you've presented. There was not really a question. I would just like to see other businesses included and help out.
Well, if, if indeed there is other monies in the future, maybe we can look at the second round to address some of those issues. Okay? All right.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. Is there any other call-ins who'd like to address this issue? Please go ahead and identify yourself and state your comment or question.
Yes, my name is Mike Neal, and I would like to strongly second Mr. Wagner's recommendation to the council on this. I believe that, that you're gonna hear a lot of people screaming that, that they're being treated unfairly when, right on the front end, without public discussion of any kind, this, this funding is gonna, just kinda been arbitrarily decided we're gonna give it to restaurants. Now, like was stated, there are other, other businesses that have been impacted, and if you're, if you're gonna be fair at all, you need to open this up. Doesn't matter, we know, of course, there's a limited amount of funding. That, that's not part of the equation. It's basically, and you know how it all works, the funding comes available and it's first come, first served, and that's just what life is. But at least you open it up to everybody who needs help, and the salons need help. I'm sure if you thought for just a few minutes on this, instead of just thinking about restaurants, that you would come up with a number of other local businesses that need help. So they all need to get their chance at this. Now, as far as what might be treated retroactively, I'm perceiving that we have actually kind of a safety problem, and I kinda hate to bring this up, because sometimes when you, you let the city get their fingers in the thing, they cause more problems than they had before. But we got all these shade covers out there, and like Mr. Matthews said before, we got wind events that come into town frequently, and what's been stated so far is these things may be necessary for over another year, if the governor gets away with continuing to clamp these lockdowns on us. I would suggest you apply also for some of this money to potentially be used, at least in a limited fashion, to pay for staff time, to have your public work guys do some study and go out and find some doable and not real expensive ways to be sure that these, all these shade covers around town are anchored down well enough so they don't get blown out and go across parking lots and hit people and hit cars and hit windows and whatever else they're gonna find, to like a big parachute. You know, these guys have already done this, and it's worked for them, it's happened, but we haven't had a big blowing wind, and you know how that is in Ridgecrest. So that's something else you ought to include in this to help the guys who have already spent their own money to put up shade covers, and, you know, they've probably tried the best they can. But, you know, as you know, if you don't have somebody who can do a few simple calculations, you just like go out there and tie some water bottles, big water bottles to them or something, try to weigh them down, and it doesn't end up being enough. So, so they're gonna need some assistance along, you know, those lines from the city, and you could easily use some funds to, to do some of that for some of those people who've already had to expend their own money. And that's a.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I was gonna mention that the county did take applications from all businesses, all forms, in the entire county. So this is a supplementary program that we're trying for, for our community. We didn't have to go for this and even offer this. It was something that Rick and Melissa worked on and brought forward as us going after an additional pool of funds from the county to be able to offer, so.
And I'd also like to add that there's very strict uses on what you can use this for. This is for emergency COVID relief-type funding. And so what Mr. Neal was suggesting to use it for staff time, to go out and, and anchor down stuff, or have inspectors go out, it's not an acceptable use. So we just tried to come up with a program within the guidelines. Again, as Mr. Strand said, with only $70,000, you can only reach so far, and I don't know what, there's maybe 30 restaurants in town, so if you divide that among all of them, that's only $2,000. And I'm throwing out rough estimates, but you figure it's not gonna go very far if you stretch it out into the parameters that, that the callers were wanting. So we're just trying to find a niche where we can spend the funds within the city limits.
I like the idea of trying to find where we can impact the most, and if the second round funding, we can, public, if you have something you would like to add particularly in the second round funding, we can design it perhaps to be more general and do that kinda stuff, so you're not eliminating the funding from other groups, but this is where we're trying first. And then I wanna see an impact, doesn't want, somebody who bought one chair, that doesn't solve anything. I mean, I know it doesn't say your chairs, but, but.
Got a call.
Okay, but I like the idea of trying to determine that. Okay, caller, please identify yourself.
Will we be allowing outdoor tables and furniture?
We're offering table and chair sets.
Just one minute, caller.
Yes.
Okay, are we ready? Caller, please identify yourself and state your question or concern.
Yeah, this is Matthew. Hi. This is a, a noble effort here, but I would, if we're gonna let the restaurants have it, I would prefer that we allow them to put up partitions or whatever other items that they need or are commanded to have, so that we can increase the capacity more than just 25%, as Mr. Strand suggested. 25% is not very much. And I hadn't had a chance to think about anything else, unless it would be some other groups maybe in town.
I don't think Mr. Stan Strand said 25%, did you?
No.
That you were suggesting that?
No, no, I'm saying that the restaurants, I mean, right now, they're, they have zero, they have zero restriction for indoor dining. They cannot have any indoor dining at all. So they're all outdoor. They could use this to expand their outdoor, and it appears that they're, the restaurants are gonna have the ability to have 25% capacity indoor. So this will allow them to, to expand their outdoor, to better improve their experience for their customers outdoor, so then they can have that between the 25% indoor and what they can develop outdoor, they might be able to get back to where they used to be. And that's the importance of this grant. And, and as you know, we've been working on this for about four months?
Yeah.
Four months, trying to work our way through to find a program that fit the restrictions of this grant, and we found one that we feel that fits the restrictions. The county has approved it, and we feel that it will have a, a significant impact on one industry. We'd like to have a significant amount of money to help out everybody, but with the limited amount of money that we have, we've chosen, we've chosen the program we best, what the county will allow, and which will allow a, a certain business industry to, to maybe thrive a little bit better.
Hey, Ron, I have a question for you. The, is the county still trying to get out PPE, personal protective equipment? I asked that, and they, they were at some point, they were trying to get PPE out to various businesses, and I don't know if that stopped. And I was just indicating that maybe that would be something else that you could put money to, because that has to be a high cost to businesses, especially restaurants. They're going through masks and gloves and expendables rather quickly.
The county's PPE program was meant for all throughout the county, but until they had ran out of equipment, there hasn't necessarily been an update as to whether they've run out in the Ridgecrest area. But they also hadn't fully advertised in the area. We had it on, on our city website, but there hasn't been any feedback as to whether they've gotten rid of or have handed out all of that equipment.
Sure, you bet. I was just, maybe that's one more thing we could add to the list to make a system PPE, as long as we don't get dragged down a rabbit hole.
Well, you got my comments, that's it.
Thanks, Mr. Matthews.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I, I'd like to make a comment. It appears, driving around town, that most restaurants that can't, that have room for outdoor dining have already done it. You're mentioning that maybe they could add a little more, but there's some restaurants, thinking like the Midway Cafe, they have no room to do this. I got my hair cut today in the, in a certain female barber shop in town, won't mention any names, but they are very concerned that they're gonna get shut down again. And the last time I got my hair cut, it was outside. And so I think, I, I would like to see this, restaurants and hair shops, I don't wanna say barbers, you know, because also beauticians. I mean, there's a lot of work. You take a woman that cut my hair, and she had to carry that chair outside and set it up, and she just had to do it in the shade. So once the sun came out, she was out of business again. And I don't think they'd need a lot of money, maybe one shade and a heater or a cooler. You know, we've eaten at one restaurant in town that had a cooler outside, like similar to this Cool Boss you're showing. It wasn't a Cool Boss, but a similar. And that was, that was nice, because you don't really wanna go out even in the shade in 100-degree weather and eat lunch, I don't think. Anyway, I'd like to see this make, who, restaurants slash hair salons slash barber shops.
But can't they, can't the hair salons still work inside now?
They are working inside now, but they are, they, the women, three of them indicated to me they are very concerned that they're gonna get shut back down.
I see what you're saying.
Like the governor's gonna make us go back once again.
Yeah.
You never know from day to day what's gonna happen. And would, would this be within the realm of?
We'd have to take it back to get their permission again. That's a time suck. But yes, we could go back. Remember, this is not a lot of money.
I, $73,000 is not a lot of money.
Right.
But I'm concerned that, that the restaurants in town that have already done it, so they can't get reimbursed, would they be able to do enough to really use up to $70,000?
There are, well, take alleys, they have no heaters. So when it gets cold, people are gonna quit. Heaters are the big issues that are coming forward. I mean, it's gonna start getting cold, and nobody has heaters, and those are, you know, you, you can spend anywhere from 150 to 700 dollars, but if you buy a good one, it might not blow over onto, onto your customer. So you have some of these places that may need to upgrade their shade covers so they do and can withstand maybe a little bit more wind. Some of them have anchored it down, they've bolted it to the ground. Yeah, some, a lot are renting, some are renting, you know, coolers. So, yeah, a lot of these folks, we're gonna be giving them a break because they're gonna own it, and they're not gonna have to rent it. Or they're not gonna have to go around and reconvert everything from air conditioners, now they're looking at heaters. And who knows how long this is, how long, even if you look at the yellow zone, where we're down to less than one infection per 100,000 people, you're still only looking at 50%.
You're cutting out really bad.
He's, he's working on it back there, I can see him.
I guess I misunderstand this whole thing. I was told this was a public hearing for other ideas, but we can't really entertain other ideas?
No, we can entertain other ideas. No, we can entertain other ideas, yes, correct.
I, I had a quick question. Is there any way to, like, if that were to happen, that we couldn't go back to the county with, and ask for another program idea?
If the governor was to shut them down again?
Yes.
So the, the way that this program works is, once we hold the public hearing and we decide on a program, the, it will go to the Board of Supervisors and be put on their agenda for them to approve the concept, to approve the concept of how we're gonna spend the money, that it falls within the guidelines. Then they'll work out an agreement that we'll have to sign with the county with more detail as we work out the program. Then that agreement has to go back to the Board of Supervisors to be approved, and I believe brought back to you to be approved. Then we will enact the program. So by changing it midterm or after this hearing, all that does is add more time onto it.
Right, but what I was asking is, is there, could we move forward with this program and then potentially propose an alternate one as well?
To use with this funding?
Is there any other funding available?
Potentially a second round. I was notified about that yesterday, that there's a potential second round coming.
So we could go ahead and move forward with this one, and then if there's a second one coming, we could target salons or one of the other areas mentioned?
Or one of the other ideas that came, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other public comment, both in the council chambers and online? No calls in, Gary? Okay. Is there any other public comment, any other comment from the council? Okay, your motion?
One more thing I need to add, I'm sorry, Mayor. I put in front of you a change to the resolution, and I'd just like to note it since it wasn't in the packet. This was sent to me from the county, and the Code of Federal Regulations for CDVG projects require that this wording be put in the resolution, that I was, I was not aware of this. So I've added it, but I'm gonna read it just so that the public knows and that you guys understand. That the activity is designed to alleviate existing conditions. Those conditions pose a serious and immediate threat to the health or welfare of the community, which are of recent origin or which recently became urgent, i.e. to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. That the city is unable to finance the activity on its own, and that other sources of funding are not available. So that wording was added to the resolution, and I just wanna make sure that you're aware and that the public knows that as well, because it was not in the packet.
It doesn't substantially change anything, except that the city has no other funds to do this itself, and that's clear, we don't.
Correct.
And that it is for an immediate threat. I'm not sure, serious and immediate threat?
That's the coronavirus.
Okay.
The, the funding was designed when the coronavirus first happened, and so it was able to be rushed through, so that's what they meant by immediate threat.
Okay, all right, I got it.
So when you make the motion, I'd like you to make the motion with the addition of that, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, motion?
I make the motion with the addition of the statement just read by Ms. Charlon.
Second.
Please vote.
Sounds very burdensome to me.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item. Second reading and adoption of ordinance 2005, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code as it relates to the conflicts of interest. Rika, can you talk to us about that, please?
I would like to. If Lloyd is still on the line, I'd like to defer to him, though, since I was not at the first meeting when this was heard, I'm, I'm not sure of what was mentioned. So I'd rather Lloyd take this one, since he was here for that first reading.
Okay, Lloyd's?
I am, I am, I am still on the line, on the line, this is Lloyd Tilchin. But, Rika, I was filling in for you.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Oh, my gosh.
So this is a, this is a second reading, which means this is the action that, that's actually an action. This is, this is adopting the ordinance. This is a amendment that the law requires that the city's Conflicts of Interest Code, which is in our municipal code, that it be updated periodically. So this action is in compliance with that update. We took the opportunity to make corrections that should have been made in the past or that were confusing in the past. The staff report describes that job titles were changed. And by the way, this, this all has to do with positions that are required to file a Form 700, which the council members know that well, because all council members, and I do as well, file these Forms 700. So the staff report describes the changes that were made. Job titles were changed, titles were deleted, and job titles were added. So a good example of changing is apparently that one point in history, there was a chief administrative officer, but there is not that position anymore. The ordinance that is before you clearly describes with, shows with strike-throughs, words that are taken out, and with underlining words that are added. And you will notice in one section of the ordinance, it appears that all of the titles have been struck through, and that's because we reorganized them in alphabetical order, because there was no logic to the order that they were in before. Rika, have I missed anything?
No, sir, you did a great job.
Hey, hey, Lloyd, this is Kyle, just, just for the public, sorry, this mask. Can you explain what a Form 700 is?
You didn't fill one out?
Yes, thank you.
I'm, I'm asking Lloyd to, to answer for the public.
Go ahead, Lloyd, please.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Blake. Thank you, Councilmember Blake. So Form 700 is required by the Political Reform Act, and it's all about disclosure and transparency. And Form 100 is a, a state form where certain city officials that are now listed in this ordinance describe gifts that they've received, that's sort of the most famous one. And it's all about transparency. So receiving a gift is not necessarily a problem, but it has to be disclosed, so that the public is aware of it. Anyone want to add anything about Form 700s?
You basically have to lie your financial life out for the world.
Yeah.
I mean, pardon my bias, but...
Thank you, Lloyd.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments from the public or council or online calls?
Two motions.
Okay.
Do we need to?
Ready. Make a motion to waive reading in full of ordinance 20-05, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, amending the municipal code as relates to conflicts of interest.
Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Make a motion to adopt by title only ordinance 20-05, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest, amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code as it relates to the conflicts of interest.
Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now we come to committee reports. I would like to ask a question on the committee reports to staff. When we have these committee meetings, are they going to be open to the public following all the rules that we have to?
Ours was yesterday.
I would hope we would, if we're going to do this, but if we're not, we, I want to tell them ahead of time, knowing that we can either jump back or go forward.
Yeah, I believe the intent to staff is to open the committee meetings to the public, hold them in the council chambers, and obviously, you know, adjust as necessary, dependent upon the circumstances within our community. But I, I think we'll, we'll have them open.
Okay. All right, so, committee then, finance?
Did not meet.
We're meeting next Monday?
Correct.
And we have a document about that thick to go through. I printed it out, it's about that thick.
Yes.
In fact, it's right there. So, okay. Infrastructure?
I defer to you, since I wasn't there.
You, you would probably be glad that you weren't there, because it was a, it was a marathon meeting. We only had two items, but the first one, and the first one was very short. We talked about the Energy Co-op, the Cal Choice Program. We've had questions about participating in that, and Bard gave a nice summary of that. He spoke to the administrator of the program, and she informed us that we do not have a large enough population center to support the administrative costs of that program on our own. So Lancaster participates, and they're barely covering their costs right now, so. So maybe in the future, you know, if maybe Bakersfield were to sign on, we could try to partner with them at the same time. But for now, doing it on our own is not an option. But the long item that we discussed was the landscape and lighting maintenance districts, because we've had a lot of conversations about the issues with those, so we kind of discussed three different topics. Mr. Kulp had had lots of conversations with Bakersfield on how they process that, they do their own. And by doing it themselves, they're able to save a lot of money. We are not able to do it ourselves due to staffing limits, and we asked Bakersfield if they would be willing to do it for us. They weren't interested in doing it for us, but we thought we would ask. We had discussion on what was done with Oasis, because Oasis didn't do the traditional process. They did a development agreement where they're just going to handle, because they have internally landscaping and lighting that they're going to handle, their agreement is, is that they're going to maintain all of it, even the kind in the public right of way. So that's something, you know, with the development of that scale in the future, maybe we could continue to entertain. But we talked about what we could do with the ones that don't fall into that category. And so what we're looking at is potentially, what the homework kind of sent back was, was looking at the fees that we already collect. Like, we already collect a drainage fee, a parks fee, a public works fee, that we would potentially reduce those fees to cover the cost of the lighting and landscaping district report and joining in the amount that they already pay out. So basically, it would provide some relief for the developers to not have to pay that additional fee. And it wouldn't, because if we got rid of them, it would just put more burden on our general fund, continuing to add more and more lights that we're paying for the bills. So that's one idea that we're looking at. We're still going to have more discussions about this at the other meetings, so.
I sat in, I was Mike Maurer at that meeting, and so one of the things I wanted to make sure that, since I will not be able to speak at the next meetings when they come, that we look at not impacting our general fund, because I think my concern is, we take away the costs of, of the something, away from the developers and put that somewhere else, it impacts the general fund. And the general fund, if I'm not in a lighting and landscape district, I pay those dollars into the general fund, and the general fund comes back out and pays those. If I'm in a lighting and landscaping district, you pay that through your fees to the, the developer pays that out of the dollars that come in for those specific costs. And I am concerned that, and this is why I've been asking all along for almost six years now, I want to see a citywide landscaping, lighting district that everybody is benefited from, and that the costs are from all of them, rather than saying, okay, this developer, you, this is your cost, and this developer, this is your cost. Based on, and I'm not saying they're arbitrary, I just want to make sure that we look at it from the point of view that the general public, the general fund, I'm sorry, not general, general fund does not bear the burden of those costs that would be attributed to a developer. And that's my concern, that in, in order to give those, I'm going to call them benefits, and that's not fair, but I can't think of a better term to say, the reduction in costs to the developers, that where does that money come from? We didn't pull those arbitrary costs out of the sky, that's what we determined our cost to be.
Right, the, the fees that we collect, the, the park fee, the drainage fee, the public works fee, those cannot be put into the general fund.
I got that.
So they, so we're, by doing this, we're not impacting the general fund, because they're from the special funds, and so...
I got that.
Yeah.
I, I do, I do understand it. I'm not saying it's a bad idea to look at it. I just don't want to see the money, the monies that are reduced to the developer that are borne by everybody. And that, I don't want to see that happen, because the, the, obviously, they were charged that cost, because that's what it was. So if we're going to reduce it, the cost that was will be borne by everybody. Am I, am I misunderstanding something? And that's all I'm asking, when you look at it.
Well, you're right, you're right to some degree, you're right to some degree, but, but the fees that, that Lindsay's talking about are restricted fees. For example, we, we pay about three thousand dollars per home to go into the drainage fee. I'm not sure how much money we have in that account. I'm not sure if it's being, getting spent for, for improvements, but...
But if it costs us, if, if the cost is three thousand dollars to do that, and we lower it by...
Well, but you don't, you don't, you don't know that. For example, when, when I got my subdivision of 24 lots, and so now I've paid three thousand, I've paid seventy-two thousand dollars, basically, over the last several years, and taking care of it to do the subdivision, towards drainage fees, I was, I, I, it was determined that I was in the norma stump. That seventy-two thousand dollars has never been spent improving that stump. See what I'm saying?
But they, and you're also still required to make drainage improvements on your site as well.
But if you, if the cost is seventy-two thousand dollars, and if that is what you're being, I'm, 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 okay, you're being assessed ten dollars, I mean, we're going to drop it to eight, because we assume, we determined our cost was ten dollars. And then if you reduce it to eight, where does that other two dollars come from?
Well, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I'm not sure that, that, that the fees that were sent are not somewhat arbitrary.
I don't know that, and that's why I just want to make sure that we're not burdening everybody.
Now, for example, the Downs project, the Downs project was just done with those fees.
Traffic impact fees.
Traffic impact fees. So they were spent, and they, and those traffic impact fees could only be spent on certain projects, which were determined improving the center dividers or widening a street. So that, that was a perfect example of how those were spent appropriately. They could not be spent repaving an existing street.
Right, and, and we were, and we were saying, it's because drainage fee is just one example, but we have the list of fees. There's a couple, obviously, like the school, we, we are not in charge of that one, so we don't change that one. But we were talking about, we wouldn't just hit one fee, we would kind of even it out to cover the seven thousand dollar or less cost of preparing that report to join the district. Because we don't want, what we're trying to balance is, we want to have them joining the district, but we also hear them saying that they're already paying a lot of fees, they're already paying a lot in improvement costs. So we're trying to make ourselves attractive still in this environment of California.
Again, I don't want to belabor the point, but if it, unless it reduces our cost, somehow those fees are going to be paid from somewhere. And so I'll let you guys figure it out, since I can't speak to the infrastructure committee after this. But as, as doing that, I can do it now. So, thank you.
One, one thing I'd like to interject for next meeting is I've, I've had some people concerned about water usage, and we have, for example, one subdivision that put in a lot of landscaping. And can those landscaping district fees be spent to redo that area to cut down the water usage?
We, we talked briefly about that as well, actually. Mr. Cox brought that up, Planning Commissioner Cox.
He's my buddy, so...
Yeah, so, and that was one of the things, was potentially starting to, because in some areas, for instance, some things, once they die, once, you know, and, and looking at zero scaping some areas some more, so that we cut down on water usage.
Yeah, some, some of the subdivisions in the past have, in my opinion, went way overboard in the landscaping.
Yeah.
Not zero scaping, but actual landscaping. And so if we cut that down, number one, that'd save the homeowners some money, because that would reduce the ongoing costs of water, et cetera, so, anyway. So I, I think we need to discuss that further at the next meeting. And I'm not sure what position I'm going to be in, in the next meeting.
Oh, then maybe I could go again.
Maybe I'll be there again.
Okay, sorry, Lindsay.
That's what I was actually thinking, then, I was like, you may end up being there.
I, I, yeah, I, I won't be very far recovery at that point.
Okay. All right, Economic and Development Committee?
We haven't met since our last council meeting.
Next, next Wednesday, right?
Is there anything, I don't know that we had.
Our next, our next meeting will be canceled.
We're not, yeah, we're not going to have a meeting, because we didn't have any items.
All right.
Okay, so no meeting next month? No, no meeting next time?
Yes.
All right, Parks, Rec, and Quality of Life?
Yes, so I briefly touched on this earlier, but yeah, we had a long discussion. We had, we have gotten a professional grant writer, consultant, they were successful, and, sorry, I turned my back to you, but I... So there's, they successfully won five last round, so we signed on with them. They were very encouraging, they were impressed by the amount of effort that our staff had done so far. They feel very confident, I know there's some questions out there about, were we going to be able to pull this package together in time? The submittal is due mid-December, and they said we are well on track to meet that. We're on track to get our five meetings, plus maybe even some extra, and, and so we were going through, and I know I talked with staff today, we were going through and looking at staff's, the site selection criteria a little bit more closely, to see if there's one. What we're really trying to do, since it's a competitive grant, is to maximize our points, and make sure we're in the best position we can be to actually be successful at winning this grant. So they're still continuing, like, to, to work on those things, and so look for more meetings to engage in. We also had a very brief discussion on, we actually already received some grant funding, and we're looking at pairing that with some park impact fee money to potentially look at what we can do. Can we expand fields? Can we expand fields with that? The initial input we got back from HLA was that if we go the traditional route, that won't be enough money for field expansion, but we're looking at, can we use some of the purchasing contracts? Can we look at, last time, we had a local contractor help us out with the Kermit Gie refurbishment. And so we're going to talk with that contractor to see if he has any ideas, to see if this amount of money is reasonable for getting some kind of field expansion. We will be bringing forward an item at the next meeting to get a commitment. Part of the competitive grant is that we commit to funding maintenance costs for 30 years. Anything else?
No, other than, it was a good meeting. We had quite a bit of public participation. We had the superintendent of the schools, we had teachers, we had swim team, coaches. And so there was a lot of input. One of the things, you know, that's kind of a focus right now is the site selection, because the grant's pretty specific on what can, what constitutes an area that meets the standards for the grant. And so a lower income, a area that's a new, would be a new park area. So using an existing park or using a, the Penny Pool site, may or may not be a good selection, because the, like, like you were saying, with the maximizing our points, we, to maximize that, it's got to fit within those real specific parameters of that site. And so that's one of the things that we discussed last night. So hopefully, we can narrow that down and come up with a, you know, site that works. And so they're currently working on that. But it's got to meet some pretty tight parameters to maximize those points. You know, if you put it in an area where the incomes are higher, or near another park, or, so, we're working on that aspect of it. So hopefully, we'll have some more information to bring to you on the next meeting.
And the School Board, we're very excited. They're likely going to be doing a resolution of support. And so that's another thing I should put a plug out there. If there's any service groups or even individuals, if you want to write a letter in, or your service group does of support, and how this would be a benefit to you, you can send those in to Jennifer Ledbetter, at JLedbetter@Ridgecrest-ca.gov. And that way, those can be included into our packets.
One of the things that they were pretty specific on, too, is that the council as a whole isn't a primary driver of this, it's the community. And that community support, community responses, letters from the community, swimming, you know, the swimming lessons, the fact that kids can't swim, have not had, we got a whole generation of kids growing up that, you know, that haven't had the availability of swim lessons, learning how to swim, it's a public safety issue. Anything that we can get from the community, you know, through letters and schools, and that's what we're working on, too, is addressing. And the schools have been very, the district has been very proactive in wanting to participate in this, and so, but can't stress enough that the community involvement is the key thing. That's why we're having a public meeting out in, you know, at the sports center, to be out in the public and have them come up and participate.
And the youth engaging, yeah.
But they were kind of clear that the council's not a, you know...
Yeah, if we really support it, they don't care about us as much. They want to know that the public really supports it.
Kind of overseeing the process.
When is the next meeting?
So what we were looking at is October 20th is the one where we will ideally have it out at Kermit Gie. And we're doing that because soccer and baseball are both out there. So that way, we're getting out there, putting ourselves in the middle of those young families and getting their input and participation. And then, as I mentioned, our regularly scheduled meeting is normally the first Tuesday, which is Election Day. So likely, they sent out an email asking if people were available on Monday the 2nd instead. So, and then likely, we'll still have another meeting. Once we finish the site selection, we will have a meeting in the neighborhood to make sure the neighbors of that site, we get, really get their input in a half-mile radius.
A half-mile radius of the site. So they really want a lot of community involvement from a radius of about a half-mile from the site selection.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Melissa. RACBB, sorry.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm glad to be addressing you again tonight. For the RACBB committee report, we are actually promoting, again, the California Welcome Center that will be opening. We are targeting end of first quarter, beginning of second quarter of next year for the opening. The construction will begin very soon, and there should be signage on the building also coming soon. We will also be having a regular board meeting on October 21st, which is a Wednesday, at 9:00 a.m., and it will be on Zoom, and the information will be available to the public as well, if they would like to participate. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other committees, boards, or commissions?
So for the League of California Cities, I am, at the moment, going through the annual conference expo. Luckily, it's virtual, so if I, I could take, I take my lunch hour, or this afternoon, or this evening, after, yeah, the meeting, I'll catch up on some of the presentations that I missed, and I'll do the same thing for day two. The only hard time is, as we've discussed in the last city council meeting, the resolution that the League of California Cities is pushing together, and we, the City of Ridgecrest, are going to take a stance to vote. And I am going to, right now, leaning towards voting no against their resolution, because of my concerns over the longstanding First Amendment, so on and so forth. We've talked about it at length last meeting. That is, that vote will be cast on Friday, and the conference is, we're in the middle of that right now.
Do you know if there's others that are doing this, taking the same position we are yet?
I haven't talked to other city councils.
They normally have a session.
There's going to be a session beforehand.
Where they give comments, yeah.
There's going to be a session...
I know sometimes they talk earlier.
Yes, yeah, sometimes there's some chat features, but I have, I've worked during the day, so I missed those.
I understand.
Yeah, but that's okay, I don't mind. So we, that, there will be a session before the vote. The vote's around 11:00. At 10 o'clock, there's going to be a session, Zoom meeting, and everybody, all the delegates will have a discussion.
Okay, any other boards, commissions, committees? Okay, thank you. City managers' report?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, future agenda items, anyone?
I have one thing. I'll pose it as a question, and then it could possibly be an agenda item. It's the, so this is over to the Infrastructure Committee. There was a concern, oh, sorry, go ahead.
It was, go ahead, I'll let you, and I'll tell you it was added.
Oh, okay, no. So when, a couple of council meetings ago, there was a, there was a discussion item to renew the police resource officers with the schools. And in so doing that, I talked to several school administrators. One of those school administrators told me they would like the addition of a crosswalk right there on Downs and Los Flores, that's going from north to south. And so I expressed that over to Ms. Stevens on the Infrastructure Committee, and she said they may or may not discuss that.
Yes, and Rebecca put it on our next infrastructure agenda.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, mayor and council comment? Anyone? Okay, thank you all, we're adjourned.